Okay, today is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. We call this meeting to order. Will our village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Prakno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here. We do have a quorum tonight, so we're in good shape on that. Next, next we have the pledge allegiance and the invocation. Tonight, the invocation from Pastor Dan Gregg of the Lutheran Church of the Holy Spirit. Pastor, if you could come down, please. Everyone, please rise.
Pledge of allegiance first?
No, no. God comes first.
Alright, nice. "We begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. I thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, for your death and your resurrection. I thank you, Lord Jesus, for the joy of your resurrection at the close of this Easter season. Thank you so much, Lord Jesus, for peaceable government here in Elk Grove Village. Lord Jesus, the people have spoken, and tonight we are swearing in four trustees. Thank you so much, Lord Jesus, for these people, all the ways that you've prepared them over the course of their lifetimes to do this role to serve the people of Elk Grove Village. I ask, Lord Jesus, like King Solomon, that you would grant them wisdom, discernment between right and wrong, as well as give them joy in their service towards the people. I ask you also, Lord Jesus, to guard the hearts and minds of our fire, our police officers, our EMS workers, as they protect and watch over our city. Also, Lord Jesus, I ask, because this is the invocation, I invoke the Holy Spirit; for only from the Holy Spirit does unity and order come. I ask, Lord Jesus, for peace on this meeting, that you would bless our convocate or our conversation and business. And finally, Lord Jesus, for the people of Elk Grove Village, that they would turn to you and trust in you for all things, to see the wonderful things that you have given them, that it is all from your hand. In your name, Lord Jesus, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen."
Amen. The flag's to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Folks, please be seated. Pastor, hang on a second. Yes, of course. Can't let you go. And, um, is that your wife, Victor?
Yeah.
And when she, uh...
She's due June 6th.
Oh, my gosh. Soon. So, extra for the baby.
Nice.
So, we got you covered. Pastor, nice. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Good luck and everything.
Last time she made these into very awesome cookies.
Did you? Oh, hang on. Here you go.
Thank you so much.
That means, though, the mayor gets one, just so you know. Thank you. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of May 9th, 2023.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on May 9th, 2023, as submitted and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Listener, a second by trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show now its approval. Okay, move on to the mayor and board of trustees report. What's gonna happen tonight, just so everyone understands, is, um, we're gonna go through the board meeting with the existing board. Since all the activity being voted on tonight has occurred, why the existing board has been sworn in. And then, at the end on the new business, we'll say our thank yous and wishing well, I don't like to say goodbyes, wishing well to, uh, to trustees that will be stepping down. Um, even though Pat's already technically stepped down, we still feel he's stepping down tonight. So, we'll recognize Pat and Sam tonight also. Then, um, we're swearing in our two, two of the three new library board members that are here tonight. And then, we're swearing in the new trustees, uh, the three that got elected, and, uh, future trustee Bush, who's being appointed to take, uh, trustee Feiter's seat for the remaining two years of his term. So, with that said, we move on now to the mayor's report. A couple of quick items here. Uh, we had a prayer breakfast back on Thursday, May 11th. Pastor Gates hosted that over the Hope Living Church. It's, um, you know, I think it was, um, future trustee Gerash would like to be a village liaison with the church group in the village, I think is a great idea. Um, if anyone objects to that idea, that we would do that?
It's a wonderful idea.
So, soon to be trustee Jerish, Jerish, I'm trying. I grew up 63 years, they always say Gerash. I'm learning the right name, Jerish. Cherish, Jerish. Cherish, it's in my brain. So, uh, trustee, soon to be trustee Jerish, you will be our first liaison, village liaison with the, uh, church group. So, we appreciate you doing that. Because it was disheartening how few people showed up, and that was a great thing. As you notice here in Elk Grove, we have every different congregation during the year has a chance to do the invocation. Uh, we have the Shinyuan Temple, we have Buddhists, um, we have Baptists, Catholics, Protestants, Lutheran, you name it, we have 'em. And we think that's great. We wanna celebrate people's religion and beliefs. And so, they have a church council that meet, and I think it is about time we have someone from the village working together with that. Um, you know, you can't separate, uh, church and state. It's, it's still part of together, so you got it set. So, thank you, Kathy, for doing that. Uh, also, um, I give the state of Illinois, which I don't often do this, I give the state of Illinois government a kudos. If remember, we kind of briefly talked in the past how the House down in Springfield was looking to pass a law where they're gonna make bathrooms all neutral gender. And as a grandfather of nine, and raised my own kids, all that, we have no problem with different bathrooms. You know, one for men, one for women, one for anyone. Uh, that's fine, family, whatever you wanna call it. And the state was looking to go the other direction. To the Senate's credit, they fixed it. So, now, the state law is you have a men's, a women's, whatever you, you know, and one that's open to anybody. And, um, I give the state, uh, credit for doing the right thing and getting that done, and it saves the village from having to take any legal steps to make any changes we thought was necessary. Also, remember, on June 4th, Sunday, June 4th, we're gonna have our fifth anniversary of Elk Grove Carers. It's gonna be right out here in the town center area. Uh, we're gonna have a car show from 3:00 to 5:00 with Tony Ocean playing during the show. We're gonna have food trucks from 4:00 to 7:30, and then at 6:00, we're gonna have the grassroots concert. So, it's set up like a normal concert. So, again, we're here to celebrate our fifth anniversary. We got some major announcements with the Elk Grove Carers program we'll announce that day. It's expanding, it's gonna help more. Remember, it's here to fight the disease of addiction. The disease of addiction. And we're gonna keep working that and make sure that's taken care of. Uh, also, um, we have our first dispensary will be opening mid-July. The date's pretty well set, but they're not really announced yet. So, we have our first dispensary here in Elk Grove. It's located on Higgins Road, right across street from the Tech Park and the strip shopping center. And, um, so that will be opening up mid-July. And Tom, I'm not sure if you need an app, but I do have his phone number of the owner. If you need a contact, you're welcome, talk to him. So, that will be opened up, uh, in mid-July. Let's see, make sure. As we all know, coming up on July 2nd will be the first Chicago Street Race with NASCAR. And we are proud sponsor of Brad Keselowski RFK Mustang 6, uh, number 6 car. He'll be racing in the race. And, um, we've got commercials coming out starting Monday, advertising Elk Grove are tied to the race. We've got two national commercials during the race, one right before the start of it, we're very excited about. And then, part of the race will be sponsored by Makers Won It, so, uh, in-race activity. So, we're excited about that. We're hearing a lot from people. I tell ya, I would watch NASCAR, not that much, um, like the Indy 500 this week, the only Indy car race I watch, but it's the Indy 500, only horse race, right, it's the Kentucky Derby. I mean, so, that way. But I'll tell ya, I did not realize how many NASCAR fans exist until we started sponsoring this race. I know they always tell us it's the number one sport in America. Um, I didn't realize it until we started sponsoring, but we've got a lot of NASCAR fans here in Elk Grove Village. So, we're excited about it, hope it carries well. So, tonight, we're gonna show you the two 30-second commercials we have. They'll be running in the Midwest starting Monday, and then during the race season, or the race, we'll have each one to play once nationally to every market. So, Caroline, if you would.
Just outside Chicago and their community. Actually, the state. Sure, and the people to help your business thrive.
No, no. Driving a race car is a lot. I hope you're nervous, only 2 billion people watching. You're fine. Pardon? Okay, take your time, Caroline. Okay, I mean, oh, Ross? He's leaving.
I'm outta here. He's had enough.
He had enough, he's gone.
Elk Grove Village has the infrastructure and the people.
These better be damn good commercials.
And a business owner. I know that driving a race car, it's a lot like. Elk Grove Village is a great team.
If we can't do it, that's fine, we can move on. Do what? I'm sorry, what? Running a... So, I should yell at the projector, you're saying?
Make you feel free, especially when things are going well.
Okay, well, trust me, they're the best. You're fine, Ross, that's good. Um, okay, again, like I said, we're gonna, uh, move on to the other part of the board meeting, and then we'll come back to the, uh, taking care of the, uh, can, or the new board members. So, with that said, trustees' report, trustee Miller?
Yes, so last week, um, I found out that it was Police Week. Um, May 15th was actually Police Officers Memorial Day, so I would like to thank our police officers and our staff for serving our community. Um, thank you very much for all you do. Um, also, last week, congratulations to anybody that attended the Public Works Academy. They had graduation, and I know they had a very good and successful academy, so thank you to Public Works. Um, on Saturday, May 20th, the character, community character coalition, sorry, CCC, had packed the pantry at Jewel, and not only did the residents turn out and purchase things for the pantry, we also collected $600, which was then matched by Dr. Brian Holman, which is amazing. So, thank you to our community. And also, on May 20th, Public Works had an open house. You've been very busy. That was awesome. Um, it was very educational, it was fun, it was well-attended, and I thank you for giving the, the residents an opportunity to see what, all that you do, all of the equipment that you deal with, and, um, the kids even had construction hats. I got to see Quinn even got one, that was awesome. Um, and then, I really enjoyed the Bulgarian celebration, to celebrate the, the alphabet parade on Sunday, May 21st. It was amazing. Um, the Bulgarian alphabet was originated in the 9th century. It was something that they're very proud of. The community came through, and we had a parade. Mayor Johnson, thank you for attending that as well, it was a great turnout. Um, and so, I thank you. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
I'm just upset I couldn't see the commercial.
It's good, trust me, it's good.
Well, that's all I had.
Okay. Uh, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, on, um, May 11th, trustee Prochnow and I hosted or participated in a visit by first graders from Bird School. They came over to the village hall on a field trip day, and we talked to them in this council chambers here about the role of trustees and the mayor, and let them sit in the chair. We had some future mayors here, by the way, Mr. Mayor, so I just want you to know, they are, they all like sitting in your chair. And then, also, on Friday, I stopped over and supported the police department on your Cops on the Roof for the Special Olympics, and I know that you raised quite a bit of money, and congratulations on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. On Friday, May 19th, I also went to visit the cop on the rooftop at the Dunkin' Donuts for Special Olympics, and it started out a little rainy and shaky, but the, the police and the volunteers from CERT were out there, and they were collecting even in the rain, and they did a nice job, and I hear they collected almost 6,000, almost...
Yeah, over 5,000.
Over $5,000, so congratulations to them. Then, um, on, um, May 11th, I attended the Meet Chicago Northwest luncheon, their annual luncheon, and this year, they were honoring Pat Feiter for 11 years, serving on the Board of Directors, and he's retiring and moving permanently to Florida, but they wanted to congratulate him and presented him with a plaque, and he gave a very nice speech. So, congrats, congratulations, Pat. Public Works, I also attended the Public Works Open House last Saturday, and over 300 people attended, and it was so, the weather was picture-perfect, and it was so much fun seeing the kids riding on all the different equipment and going up on the list, going up to the roof of the Public Works building to get a, a piece of candy out of a can hanging up there. It was just, they just had a ball, and it was really a lot of fun. And then, on Monday, a reminder that on Monday, May 29th, we are having our, I believe it's our 25th Annual Memorial Day Observation at the, at the Park District Pavilion, uh, at 10:30. Uh, we will have a flag lowering ceremony, we will have the presence of the VFW and the American Legion. There will be, um, speeches by Congressman Raja and our own mayor, and refreshments will be served, a, um, flag folding ceremony will be going. It's a very nice ceremony, and I think it's the least we can do to honor those who sacrificed their lives to keep our freedom. And last but not least, um, oh, and going back to the Public Works, I forgot to say, this is National Public Works Week. So, please, if you see someone out there cleaning the streets or doing something, thank them for their work. And last but not least, the first Saturday in June, we'll be starting up back our summer, summer farmer's market out here in the parking lot. Uh, it'll be from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and we look forward to seeing you all out there to join us. And that concludes my report.
So, Congressman Raja will definitely be there on Monday?
Yes, he will, and he will be speaking.
Good. Honorable, thank you. He got us $500,000 for Elk Grove Carers program.
Well, then, we should all be thanking him.
So, yeah, that's good. I know he can't make the fourth, that's why I'm glad I get to see him that day.
Good.
Thank you. Now, this is just a trustees' report, trustee Listener, a good chance for your goodbye statement in a little bit. So, for the last time after 28 years, trustee Listener, trustee report.
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the prayer breakfast on May 11th, and even though it was lightly attended, I must commend all the speakers, they did a fantastic job. I really enjoyed the remarks, and also, I joined, uh, trustee Prochnow to, uh, see trustee Feiter honored. It was really a pleasure to see Pat, 'cause I hadn't seen him in a while, but, uh, he gave a very good talk, and, uh, everyone, uh, there truly enjoyed it, and, well, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, move on now to accounts payable warrant for May 23rd, 2023.
Who is that?
It's a commercial coming back.
I move approval of the May 23rd, 2023 accounts payable warrant in the amount of
Second.
We have motion by trustee Listener, a second by trustee Miller. Uh, lawyer, will you call the roll, please? I think it's her mic.
Yeah.
I don't know. Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye. Motion passes five to nothing. Today, we have consent agenda items, A is in, what, Mr. Listener?
Apples.
Through U as in?
Ug.
Ug?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I need a motion?
Some more.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Miller. Any board members, staff, have any questions, concerns, or modifications to the consent agenda? Seeing none, anybody in the audience wants to talk about the consent agenda items? Seeing none, hearing none, and without objection, we call the votes, we just say it, five to nothing. We have no items under the regular agenda, any plant commission or zoning board, Mr. Roan?
No items under plant commission and no items under zoning board of appeals.
Okay, we move on now to recycling waste committee. Trustee Frankie, who's trying to fill big shoes on that committee.
I know. I got a lot of papers here, I'll try to figure them out, but I would like to report that the last recycling we had for the paint and motor oil collection, we have the numbers in, we received 31,500 pounds of latex paint, uh, 45,000, or 4,500 pounds of flammable cans, paint cans, uh, 3,000 pounds of bulk motor oil, and 900 pounds of antifreeze. So, yeah, I can't believe that much, but, uh, it was, uh, a great showing for everybody, and Public Works did a great job. Thank you for that, and we'll have it at the same time next year. Then, I wanna talk about, uh, what's coming up in two weeks. First thing is, has everybody got a newsletter? I just wanna point out that there was a typo in there. It is on Saturday, it's June 3rd. It says June 4th on there, which we were also talking about the character, or the, uh, Elk Grove Carers program, which is June 4th. So, somehow, we got it mixed up, so it is Saturday, June 3rd, at Public Works. And this is for electronics and for paper recycling. If you wanna know, uh, what's available, or what you can bring in, go to the village website, and there's a list of all the products. It might show some on the newsletter, that's correct. So, uh, but as...
What, are you Vanna Whiteover?
I am Vanna.
Yeah.
Can everybody see from there?
See what happens when they're, people get elected? So, that is from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Public Works, uh, building on Devon. The line usually will wind around downtown the road. Don't, if the line is long, it moves very quickly, everybody's pulling in and out, so if you get in line, don't go away, it'll move, you'll probably be in there within 20 minutes and get your drop off. So, again, June 3rd, Saturday. And, um, that's it for recycling.
Thank you. Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
Uh, I just wanna report that, uh, Kobe, we're gonna start our residential program shortly, I believe, in June?
Yeah, just as soon as school's out.
Okay, the, uh, streets in the residential, they were previously identified in our newsletter, the work will start on them shortly after school is out, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Capital Television Committee, trustee Listener.
No report. Well, I had one, but when it all screwed up tonight.
Very good. Uh, Youth Committee, trustee Frankie.
I don't know how to follow that one. We, uh, the youth committee will have an executive session meeting on June 3rd again. A lot of things happening on June 3rd. At 12:00, up in the Turner Conference Room, to decide the winners of the scholarships for the youth commission. And also, it's probably not too early to say, but July 14th is the next summer blast for the teens at Rainbow Falls, it's free for kids, uh, going into 6th grade and 12th, uh, to 12th grade, going into 12th grade. It's from 8:15 to 10:15 at night, kids, it's free. Uh, we always grow each year, so expect hundreds of kids to show up, so, uh, look forward to good weather. That is July 14th.
And trustee Listener says he'll keep track of the numbers still.
That's true.
Trustee Listener says, what, about 1.2 million?
Something like that.
Yeah.
We'll keep track.
We'll get them up in one of those hoists, you can count.
Yeah, buy me a drone.
Sure. Uh, that's all.
Okay. Information Committee, trustee Miller.
So, the village is updating their master plan, and we need residential and business development, um, input. So, we will be sending out a card similar to this, exactly like this, actually, and it's called Envision Elk Grove. We would love your input, um, for redevelopment areas. We would like you to go to our website and give your input on things that you feel are necessary or that needs improvement, and that will help us in our master plan report. That include, concludes my...
And I've already did that.
Yes.
If I can do something on the computer, anyone in the universe can do it.
That's true.
So, it's very good, but if you wanna give your input on our shopping center we're developing at Higgins Orientines Road, and other areas like long street corridors and stuff, this is your chance. We wanna hear your views, we wanna hear what you think, we wanna hear your ideas. So, please, like I said, I did it. So, if I can do it, no one, no one can say they can't do it.
That's right.
So, take advantage of that. We really wanna get your help, it would help us a lot.
These will be coming out next week. Thank you.
Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, we, uh, visited, trustee, uh, Miller and I visited two businesses in the last couple of weeks. On May 10th, we visited the Wagnon America Pump Company. They're a German pump company, uh, they're well-known in Europe, and they are coming into America. Their first, uh, facility is in Elk Grove Village, and they selected Elk Grove Village because of the proximity to O'Hare Airport, where they can get, uh, their people out to, uh, various areas in the, in the country. And all the pumps that come in from Germany, they can, uh, bring here, and they assemble here. Uh, they, they have industrial pumps for food, for beverage, and cosmetics, and these pumps, uh, they're with the augers, the pumps that go through, and they're so delicate that they can even do fruit cocktail, they, when they, uh, process fruit cocktail, it's very interesting. They're also in wastewater treatment at the other end of it. So, uh, they're, they're a first endeavor here in, in the United States, and they selected Elk Grove Village, so we welcome them. And I have a question for the board real fast, before I say the second one. Do you know how many, how, how many hospitals we have in Elk Grove?
How many hospitals?
Yeah, how many hospitals?
You're talking about the animal hospitals?
How many hospitals we have?
It's a trick question.
No, it is. How many hospitals, we have, which one?
Alexia.
Alright. That's what I thought, we only had one hospital, but we found out on, um, May 17th, we have two hospitals in town. It, one is, the one we visited was at 1050 Bound Adventure, it's called the Elk Grove Veterinary Specialty and Emergency. It's for animals, it's for dogs and cats, and it is a regular hospital. They have their examination rooms, they have operating rooms, they have recovery rooms, they have intensive care unit, and they have area where they, where they, uh, they have the dogs stay and the cats until they can be returned home, and they had several of them there while we were there. Very interesting, they're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You do not have to call if you're, if you have an emergency with your dog or your cat, you don't have to call in advance, you can just show up. And right now, they said it's just dogs and cats, they don't do birds or gerbils or anything like that. But it was very interesting, and it's nice to know that we have that facility here in Elk Grove Village. The closest animal hospital to us is actually in Bloomingdale. But again, they're open 24 hours, seven days a week, full service for dogs and cats.
So, it's manned, 20, so you, you don't have to call, just go up there?
Nope, you just go in, yes.
Yeah. My daughter, my daughter has used it frequently.
So, George, you have someplace you can go if you need one. It's open 24/7, you're good.
That concludes my report.
I'd rather go to a vet. A vet fixes a chicken, a dog, a rooster. That only fixes a human.
You're right there.
It's better off.
You'll be good.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Prochnow.
Just a reminder that our next blood drive will be Saturday, July 8th, here at Village Hall, that's a Saturday morning, and that concludes my report.
Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Airport update, as everyone saw, the FAA is actually doing their job as they turned down the first proposal from the ONCC. We feel if they would have taken our proposal, we kept pushing, it probably would have gotten through. So we're going to work on getting that pushed forward. This is to make sure we get as much fairness when it comes to nighttime flights over our homes. Like you said, we all get the benefits over here. We all should have some of the pain. So we'll keep working on that. Parade committee, we got a meeting coming up on first Monday in June, which I think is, what, the 5th? The 5th? Yep, okay.
Could be June 4th?
No, the 5th. Okay. So we're looking forward to the parade coming up and excited about that. Concert series, Mr. Knickerbocker, who's playing on June 4th?
Oh, that's not in July, is it?
No, it's, that's, I said June 4th. I didn't say July 4th.
Grassroots?
Very good. In July, we have our five concerts, actually four in July, one August 1st.
Correct.
So the fourth concert is what this year?
The Oak Ridge Boys from Oak Ridge, right?
Very good. Second concert, July 11th?
The Spinners?
Very good. Our 4th of July, which we've been waiting for quite a few years?
This is the third time a charm? Casey and the Sunshine Band?
You got it. The third concert is?
All American Reckless? Something like that.
Even these folks know it. All American, think of how I feel about you. All American rejects. So all American rejects.
You know, I'm a very sensitive guy.
You can't be.
I'll come.
You're a lawyer.
Oh.
And last concert, and not least?
Is it Ann Wilson?
Ann Wilson.
Tim's sister.
From what band?
Heart.
Very good. Nice job.
Thank you.
You got it. Good job.
Except for the reckless part, yeah.
Reckless, close enough. Okay, so we have a summer concert series coming up. We're looking forward to that. It's going to be a lot of fun. Special events committee, our next special event is on Memorial Day. And that we're looking forward to. Rain or shine?
Rain or shine because it's indoors.
Hot or cold?
Hot or cold, rain or shine.
Indoors. Okay, move on now to report, our no liquor commission meeting, report from village manager, Mr. Roan?
No report.
Report from our village clerk, Lori?
No report.
No report. Unfinished business, Mr. Knickerbocker? Yeah, nothing there as usual. New business items, before I get to mine, does any board member have a new business item tonight they'd like to do? Nothing? Okay. We move on now to our welcoming of new elected officials, but first we're going to say goodbye to a couple. So Pat Feiter, trustee Feiter, you want to drive me down here? As people may or may not know, I think most people knew, Pat has been a trustee for, what, 27?
Yeah.
27 years here in the village. When he became a trustee, I was still a trustee myself when you were appointed. He was appointed, he placed a legend here in Elk Grove, Ron Chernick, who passed away. And Pat did a great job filling his shoes. He did a phenomenal job serving the community. And Pat, back in February, stepped down from the board. I'll let him talk about it in a minute, but we respect why Pat did it. And his wife, Ann, will tell you, it was a good decision for him. They're very happy now and enjoying Florida and living well there. But we wanted to thank Pat tonight. And for all he's done for Elk Grove, which is a lot. And the time he put in, because before Pat was a trustee, he was a plant commission member for seven years.
Seven years.
And so it's 34 years experience here in the village. That's a long time, a lot of family time given up, Ann, and we can't thank him enough. So tonight, we want to honor Pat and thank him for all he's done. Matter of fact, we're not the only one. The state senate of Illinois also sent out a certificate for Pat and reads, "The Illinois State, Illinois Senate of the 103rd General Assembly of the State of Illinois acknowledges Pat Feiter in recognition of 27 years of dedication and service to the Elk Grove Village and calls for the commer- commem- commemoration." Whoa. That's not easy.
Not bad for you.
That's not easy.
I know.
Commemoration of successful career and further extends its wishes for happiness and health in his retirement, offered by our senator, Laura Murphy. And we, it says, presented to him today on behalf of the state of Illinois with a profound thank you from the state. Then the village tonight would like to honor Pat. Please bear with me. You have that many years of service. Look how tiny that print is. That's why they gave you this. Pat's done a lot, so please bear with me. This is a proclamation honoring trustee Pat Feiter on his retirement after 27 years of service to the Elk Grove Village community. Whereas Pat Feiter was appointed to the village trustee on August 27th, 1996, to finish Ronald Chernick's term and continue to serve the village for the seven four-year terms. And whereas prior to beginning Elk Grove Village trustee, Pat Feiter served on plant commission from 1989 through 1996. Whereas Pat's tenure, he served as member and chair of the recycling waste committee for over 13 years. He was a huge proponent in creating convenient recycling opportunities for the members of the community and spearheaded bringing the village paint and motor oil recycling event to fruition, what trustee Frankie just talked about. Pat also served on several other village board committees such as chair of the personnel committee, information committee, and capital improvements committee. Pat was also a member of the youth committee, judiciary and planning zoning committee, false alarm hearing board. Whereas Pat represented the village as a board member for Meet Chicago Northwest, a regional destination marketing organization that represents eight surrounding communities, including Elk Grove Village, and works hard to attract local tourism and enhance the local economy through visitor spending. Whereas Pat Feiter served as a liaison with Friends of Cycling in Elk Grove Village and championed the opening and extension of pedestrian path in the village and neighborhood areas. And most recently, Pat served as a member of the Elk Grove Village Bicycle Plan Task Force, which in 2021, supporting the addition of safe and efficient pathways for cycling and created the opportunity for new routes and cycling connectivity to the village bicycle network. And whereas Pat's efforts expand internationally as he represented the Elk Grove Village and Pernik Bulgaria, Pat was a strong supporter of the village friendship city agreement with Pernik, which began in 2018. And the intention of the friendship agreement is to encourage sharing of ideas, cultural exchanges between the two communities. And Pat participated in two visits to Pernik, where he met with Pernik officials, attended a variety of Bulgarian activities, and gained better understanding of the educational, cultural, and economic developments going on in the community. Whereas Pat Feiter took part in many historical anniversary events in the village, including the 50th anniversary celebration, featuring REO Speedwagon, and the inaugural, the Tour of Elk Grove Professional Bike Race, the 60th anniversary, which included the inaugural Oktoberfest, play party picnic event, which both are now annual events here in the village. And whereas Pat was friendly to everyone in the community, took many concerns from residents to heart, Pat's fingerprint is on every project in the village. Over nearly four decades, Pat has provided unparalleled ethical leadership, hard work, and great accomplishment for the community that he loves. Elk Grove Village will shall forever be grateful for years of service to the residents and the business of the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and the Board of Trustees and Village of Elk Grove, County of Kuntu Beige, and Illinois, on behalf of a grateful community, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 23rd, 23, as Pat Feiter Day, and officially commend him on his retirement after 27 continuous years of service and dedication to the Elk Grove Village community as village trustee.
Thanks, Eric.
Oh, by all means. Please.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much. It's the support that I've had from the community that have made this possible over the years. There's a few things I wanted to say. Now that I got my last chance to do it, I wanted to be able to say a few things that I think are important. One of them is about our mayor. I don't know you, how much you really look at local papers. You should, or everybody should be reading them. Because if you do, you'll notice that Elk Grove is truly unique with the mayor, the way he's led this town over the years. I don't know any place that is having a NASCAR race, or has sponsored a bowl, or bicycle races, or has sponsored an Olympic team, and all these other things over the years. Jeff Frankie used to fear when Craig Johnson would come back from a vacation because he said, "Oh my God, what is he going to come up with this time?" And he is a special mayor. There's, there's no doubt about it. And whether you agree with everything he's done or not, he is a very special mayor, and he's come up with all kinds of projects, ideas that are unique and different, and it makes Elk Grove stand out as a very, very special community. And I wanted to also say, I'm going to miss being on the board. And I miss the times that I had with so many great board members, going back with Bart Dill and with Jim Petry and Nancy Zarnik. They are all great friends of mine. And to see Sam Listener leave tonight, Sam, who I've always thought of as gentleman Sam, he's been an ultimate example of a gentleman. And over the years, Chris Prochnow has been a support and helped me out many, many times. And it's been a great group that we had that have worked together. And now a new group is coming on. A new group that still kept stable with people like our former police chief. Having him on the board is going to keep us going in the right direction and continuing on with Chris Prochnow. It, it will be great. We, we're going to have a really good board. Jeff Frankie, always with a sense of humor, has made all of us happy and, and has always been able to try to take the place of Nancy Zarnik by, by challenging Craig Johnson on some of the things he come up with. He doesn't get by with it, but he tries. Nancy Zarnik, when she was there, she would say to Craig, "No, Craig, you can't do that." And he'd listen to her. It's with these really fond memories. I'm so happy to see that Joe is gonna, Joe Bush is gonna be replacing me on the board. Joe has done so much for our community. He's a wonderful guy. And to have a teacher replacing another teacher is an honor for me. And I'm really happy to have Joe do this. And Tammy and I have been friends for years, if nothing else, because of the times we walked by her place, walking her dog or bicycling or seeing her husband out making himself work like mad out in front of her house. I have so many good memories of all these people. So I had to say this from my heart. I will miss all of them. And then Matt and our key people here, Maggie, Carolyn, and I clerk, Lori Murphy. It will be such a shame to not be able to see them on a regular basis because we work together so well. So thank you, everyone.
That's great, Ben. Can I have the Sister Cities people come up here for a minute? I'm Steve Schmidt, the village trustee, but I'm also the president of Elk Grove Italian Sister Cities. And our Sister Cities program started here in the year 2000. So we've been going strong for 23 years, and actually, we're getting ready to celebrate our 25th anniversary with our Sister City Termini Amarese. But I want to tell you how this program started. It started with a vision by Mr. Giovanni Gulo, and he approached Pat Feiter. And he convinced Pat Feiter to go to Termini Amarese to take a look at that town and see if it was viable to start a sister city. Well, Pat went and visited, came back, and he convinced the village board and the mayor to go ahead and start this relationship with Termini Amarese. Sister Cities program was started in 1956 by President Eisenhower to bring the world back together after World War II. So the idea behind Sister Cities, you pick a community from another country that's similar. We are, have 35,000 population, 35,000 people. Termini Amarese has 35,000 people. We're next to an airport. They have a seaport. We have the largest business park in North America. They have a business, industrial park in their community. So you can see the similarities there. But that very first trip resulted in a lot of things that happened over the last 23 years. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but our cornerstone program has been our student exchange program with Elk Grove High School. We have had this program going for over 10 years. And when you take a look at all the kids that participated, it's all the students that go on to Italy, that students have come here and visited us. And not just those students, but the students at Elk Grove High School, who may not have hosted a student, but participated in the events, met the kids from Italy. And the same thing over at the school in Termini Amarese, where they accepted our kids. They had all kinds of programs over there for them. This program has touched hundreds of students.
That's wonderful.
And it also resulted in several marriages. Believe that or not, yes. We also have a business exchange program that we have with the city of Termini Amarese. And we also have a doctor's exchange with the Lexon Brothers Medical Center and the University of Palermo Medical Center. And we just had several doctors from Lexon Brothers visit Termini in April, and are already planning to have an exchange of doctors coming here next year, next spring, and then possibly doctors going back over there. So that's another thing. And the other program that we started was we started a tourism program for adults. Every two years, we have a trip that goes to Italy, to Sicily. They spend 10 days in Sicily, and they go four days somewhere else. And I think this year they're going to a Tim Alfie Coast. Yes. So again, all of it is started because of your trip to Italy.
That's great.
So on behalf of all the members of Italian Sister Cities here, we have a little token of appreciation. And I want to take it out. I want to take this out and I want to show it to everybody. We made it small so you could take it back on the airplane.
Ah.
But it's a.
Beautiful.
It says, "Pat Feiter, from the Italian, Elk Grove Italian Sister Cities. Thank you for your vision and your support. Thank you, Pat."
Just, just one more thing. A little keepsake from the board. Here's your nameplate off your trustee seat.
Thank you.
I'm going to start here first. Everyone gets a little. And. There's a card, there's a letter.
Thank you. Thank you so much. What a surprise.
It's glistening.
Yep, better give it to Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that day we met and talked about this.
Congratulations, Pat.
Thank you so much, Ray.
No, no, thank you. I was going to say, trustee Schmidt, you aren't the only one that got married out of Sister City. My youngest daughter Megan, youngest daughter Megan and Anthony met on a trip to Italy.
That's right.
And they got married last June. So it happened. It happened. Trustee Listener? Sam?
Sam and I go back a long time, even before I became a trustee. Knew each other, and you mentioned Bart Dill. Bart, his wife Terry, Lori and I, and Sam and Dolores, we used to play cards together every month and all that. And then Sam started off on the Harper College Board, then went to District 59, and then became a village trustee in 95. And Sam brought a lot of knowledge about overall governments, which was very helpful to me, especially when I became mayor. Because he kind of showed me that governments gotta work together. You know, we're not at odds with each other. We're working to serve the same people with each other. And what happens in the school district affects a village. What a village does can affect a school district. So we gotta work together, partner together. And by doing that, we make a better community for all of us. So whether you're on the park, the library, the school, the village, we are serving the same people for the same goal, to give everyone the best opportunity to live in a community. And Sam brought a lot of that knowledge. And yeah, he's always like this, you know, exactly right when Pat said gentleman. Sam is truly a gentleman. And he showed that through thick and thin. Sometimes I got a little upset. You know, I wanted a guy to go off in the hotheaded way. Sam would always kind of steer the ship the right way. So I appreciate that. So tonight, Sam, I'd like to read something in your honor, if I can. A proclamation honoring trustee Sam Listener on his retirement after 28 years of service to the Elk Grove Village community. Whereas Sam Listener was sworn in as village trustee on April 25th, 1995, and continued serving the Elk Grove Village community for seven full four-year terms. Whereas prior to becoming a trustee, Sam Listener also served on board member of Community Consolidated District 59 from 1985 to 1995, board member of Harper College from 86 to 87. Whereas during Sam's tenure, he took part in many historical anniversary events, including the 40th Village Anniversary Dinner, Dance and Auction 1996, the 50th Anniversary Celebration, inaugural Tour of Elk Grove Professional Bike Race, Hometown Home Giveaway. Remember in 1996, Emo? Oh, I mean, 2006, a house? Emo was right there. That was Jim that won that $750,000 house on Tiltman that Syntax donated for our anniversary. So it made me happy to see an Elk Grove person win that house. That was good. So Hometown Giveaway, and with Birthday Celebration formed by American Rock Band Arrio Speedwagon, and the Village 60th Anniversary, which included the Camaro Car Raffle, along with the inaugural from Castle Chevrolet, which we appreciate, Oktoberfest Play Party Picnic, both that we still do to this day. And whereas Sam Listener was involved in renegotiating, important part, renegotiating several cable television franchise agreements. Let me go off here for a second. Jim Petry, who was a board member for 40 years, he helped form, believe it or not, cable television here in this area. Jim was on the original program, putting that together. When Sam came on the board 28 years ago, he got involved with Jim on that. And that's critical, here's why it's critical. One, making sure we get information out. We have Channel 6 here in Elk Grove. Channel 6, think about it. You got 2, 5, 7, 9. Channel 6, do you know how many entities want that low of a number on a cable? Everyone. It literally is worth millions of dollars. And these guys, Sam Tickler, has fought steadfastly to protect that every franchise renewal. Comcast can make a fortune selling off that channel. But these guys stand fast, and that's why we have it. Instead of going on some cable things, you gotta scroll through, what, 97 communities to find the channel? Not here, push Channel 6, it's right there. That means a lot, a lot for this community. So Sam, thank you for that over the years. He was best determined to bring the best communication services to the community, and made sure Elk Grove TV had a home at the municipal complex after leaving Elk Grove Park District. As chairman of Cable Television Committee, Sam provided updates at every board meeting on cable TV channels and the village. Whereas Sam was strong advocate for using latest technology to improve access to village services and make information more accessible to residents. Sam has now, for at least 28 years, pushed us to try to go to laptop computers instead of cutting down trees every year. And one of these days, it may work, one of these days. But he's always thinking of new technology when he's on the board, and it really helps us in a lot of ways. He was passionate developing Elk Grove Village's first website, flew to Los Angeles, collected National Urban Innovation Award for site design for our website. Sam remained keenly involved in subsequent website updates. He also served diligent tester and vocal champion of numerous village programs, including MyEGV Service Request App and Water Smart Customer Service Portal. Whereas Sam was very committed to supporting the village's business committee, and served as first co-chair of the Industrial Commercial Revitalization Commission, the old ICRC. He continued work in revitalizing the business park during his service as Business Leaders Forum. Sam has been involved in virtually every committee of the village board, and was appointed village's deputy mayor on May 20, May of 2022. He chaired the Regional Cable Ad-Hoc Committee, Information Systems Committee, Judiciary Planning and zoning committee, and Personnel Committee, along with many advisory boards. Sam's thumbprint is throughout this village. Whereas Sam is personally friendly, he has great sense of humor, and strong passion for public service. Over nearly four decades, Sam's provided unparalleled ethical leadership, hard work, and great accomplishment for the community that he loves. Elk Grove Village shall forever be grateful for your service to the residents and business of Elk Grove. Now therefore, I, Mayor Craig B. Johnson, and the Board of Trustees, Village of Elk Grove Village, College of Cook and DuPage, Illinois, on behalf of a grateful community, do hereby proclaim, first time ever, Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, Sam Listener Day. Never had two people one day, which means that they're free for another 3 hours and 45 minutes, do whatever the hell they want to. The police can't catch both of them, so one's gonna get away with it. And we thank you for 28 years of service to the village and your previous service. And we thank this date, the 23rd of May, 2023.
Dropped my notes. Boy, it's hard to believe I did all this for such little pay. But trustee Feiter said most of the things I wanted to say, and of course, he said them much better than I could. But I do have to express my gratitude for, to so many people. I'm not gonna really mention names, maybe just titles, because I'll probably not get the names right. First, I want to thank my wife for giving me the time to spend at the village for so many years. In fact, last week, we celebrated our 60th wedding anniversary. Of course, she wants me to remind everyone that she had to crawl down the aisle because she was so much younger than I was. But, the, I do want to thank our creative mayor. I know he's very hardworking. And trustee Feiter did mention some of the ideas he came up with. And there's even more than you've heard about. But he's always thinking, and he's probably the best mayor in the, definitely in the region, if not the country. I also want to thank all the trustees I've been lucky enough to serve with over the years. And of course, I think we do have the best staff in the country. Somebody asked me the other day, "What do you have to do to be a trustee?" And I said, "I think it's just two things. One, listen to the people and hear them out, and then try to get the best staff you can. And if you do that, it's an easy job." And I think we've won on both counts on that. The, we also have so many volunteers. Some came up, Sister City isn't really a volunteer group of the village, but they work closely with the village. And we have so many like there, there's SIR, and our Police and Pension Board, and so many other, or Fire Board, I'm sorry. And they all do a fantastic job. And of course, I have to thank the residents, and I guess the voters and the businesses. When I was serving on some committees, I did get to meet many business people. I was on one committee called the ICRC. It was called the Industrial Commercial Revitalization Committee. In fact, I served with Craig's dad on that committee. At that time, we called him Mr. Johnson. Later, we just called him Craig's dad. But another committee was the Business Leaders Forum, which trustee Schmidt heads up now, and they're carrying the torch quite well on that. And I also spent time with Enclave. Enclave is a group that just is trying to get people to think better. In fact, John Delis, our CEO, is here tonight. Thank you for coming, John. And let's see, oh, I just wanted to end up with, even though we had a little trouble tonight, we do have an outstanding local TV channel. From what I've seen, based on the awards they win, and looking for the channel, so many towns have sort of got rid of their cable TV because it was tough with all the other, not cable TV, local TV. And, but they do a fantastic job, especially around Christmas time, when they show movies that are just unique. And, and of course, we do have, as Tammy said, we do have an outstanding newsletter, and we have an outstanding webpage. But I do want to end by saying, even with all that, we do have to thank someone like Tom Robb with the Elk Grove Journal, or I don't know if you go by the other name, Journal and Topics, but, and Chris Plaschek, who's not here tonight, with the Daily Herald. I still believe with all the way we communicate, if we don't have those papers out there, we're not gonna get the word to everyone out there. So thanks to them, and, and another thing they do is they write stories with facts. It's not like some of these national newspapers where they just put so much opinion in there, and you see where it's gotten in our country. And I'm gonna end with the only thing I kept from the speech that I did write out about two years ago. It was a quote, or is a quote supposedly credited to Cary Grant. I got the quote, it was on my room key at the Black Hawk Hotel in Davenport, Iowa. And I hung on to it, I still have it in my wallet. But it seems to say everything, and I've used it for some things. And it just says, "Don't cry because it's over. Smile because it happened." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with people leaving, we have now people coming. People don't realize, the village and library, we kind of intertwine together. Where this library is kind of adjunct off of the village. They got the own duly elected board, own decision, own budget and all that. The budget goes through the village and all that. So it always gives me a great honor every two years to swear on the new library board members. And people forget, library is still vitally important. You know, it's not like when I was a kid, you took out books, all that. You still take out books. But they provide so much other information for people, and information to be used by people. And our library does an absolute phenomenal job. And we can't thank them enough. So I'll start first, if I can ask, Mary, come on down. You wanna, you got family, guests, people with you? Yourself? Okay, come on down. If you can, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Vitale.
Have been elected to the position of library trustee.
Have been elected to the position of library trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Library trustee.
Library trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Introduce yourself, come on, Mary.
Hello, my name is Mary Vitale. And I'm very honored to be part of the library trustee group. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. She's gonna go far in politics. She knows how to keep it short and sweet, that's good. Okay, next I'd like to have Eileen, come on up. You got some family with you? Come on down, come on, come on. Come on down. If I took off my suit coat, I'd look just like him too. But I don't want to show off, so I'll keep mine covered up here. Good to see you. If you will, oh, you got other people here?
Well, my husband's right there.
Oh. Come on down, come on down. Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eileen Valentino.
Have been elected to the position of.
Have been elected to the position of.
Library trustee.
Library trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and State of Illinois.
Constitution and State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Library trustee.
Library trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I just want to thank the community for being so supportive. I was appointed a couple years ago, so I ran for reelection this year, and I was overwhelmed by the support that everyone had. So I thank you very much, and hope to continue to do the good work that we can do at the library. And I want to thank Deborah, our director. We could not get a better library director than Deborah Nelson. This is my family, this is Tara, my son Tony, and my husband Jim. Thank you.
So I better get some.
There you go. Are you still with training?
Hang on. I'm serious, I was gonna come in short, I was, but I don't want to show Tony up, so. So here you go, Eileen, thank you. And I know we'll take care of Renee.
Yes, at the next meeting.
We'll take care of the library meeting.
Oh, gosh, thanks.
Thanks a lot, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna swear in four trustees. Before I start doing the trustees, let me first take care of business. I would like a motion to nominate Joe Bush to fill the remaining term of trustee Pat Feiter. We have a motion by trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie, second by trustee Miller. Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Trustee List, oh, trustee List is not there. Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Oh, trustee Listener is there, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion passes. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna swear in the four board members. And I'm going in order based on election and seniority and all that. But before I do that, I want to say something. You know, anyone watches the news, reads the paper, see what's going on, there's a lot of issues in this world, a lot of issues. But the one thing I think that makes Elk Grove unique is we have not forgotten our roots. Our roots is embedded in the community. Between religion, family, community service, it makes it work. And too much of this country has forgotten that. Thank God we have it here in Elk Grove. Over the years, many people have asked me, "Hey, run for Congress, run for this," no way, no way. Because I wouldn't survive. Here, we get things done. Even my cockamamie ideas get done. We get things done, because we all have our heart for this community in each and every one of us. You know, I mean, tonight, you saw us joking around. George and I are turning, we joke all the time. It's nothing usual, I call him my Ed McMahon. For young people, you have no idea who Ed McMahon is, or Johnny Carson. For us old timers, he was a god at one time. So I'm Johnny, he's my Ed McMahon. We have a lot of fun together. But he knows I love anybody more than I love him. He does a great job for this community, for serving individually and all the rest. But that's how we are, we're like a family here in Elk Grove. And that means a lot. And I'll tell you, what really made me feel that was this election. The way the community turned out, the level of support that this board got[1754.54] out, that's what's unique about Elk Grove. So, even though he may get despondent, which I do, I get very depressed some nights watching that news, what's going on nationally, states sometimes, I don't get despondent or depressed by Elk Grove. That's what keeps me going. So, I want to thank this community. You've done a great job over the years, electing good people, people with their hearts in the right place, and more importantly, people that truly are here to serve the people of Elk Grove. And we showed that again this election, and I thank the people of Elk Grove. It's amazing hearing people turn out, voting, why they're voting, what they're doing, and that means a lot. So, we're lucky. We've got four great individuals going to serve on this board. Think about this, I figured this out the other day, I get too much time sometimes. In the last four years, four years since trustee Petry stepped down to this time, we have lost 110 years of experience on this board. 110 years. But I think that's good. You know, people always say, oh, the board's been together. The board was together a long time. And I'll tell you, that's one of the reasons why I think we accomplished as much as we have over these past 20 some years. But change is here. We know it, we embrace it, we want it. And the people we've brought on, I think are going to move along this village as well, if not better than we've done in the past. We're very lucky about that. And so, you know, so when people say, well, you need to check, our board's changing. After tonight, four of the six members have four years or less experience. Four years or less. That's not a lot. That's a lot. Two brand-new ones, one with a year experience, one with four years. That's a lot of change coming, but it's coming for a good reason, and I think it's going to serve us well. So, with that said, I'd like to first start off with our senior trustee of the group, a four-year experience, but, Farm Police Chief, if Steve Schmidt could come on down, Steve.
Again. Sworn in, let's see. To chief.
1999.
And then to trustee.
2000, what was that, 19?
2019. So, here we go. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stephen F. Schmidt.
Have been elected to the position of.
Have been elected to the position of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good job, buddy. Great job. Thank you very much. Couple of things I'd just like to say is I'd like to thank the village board, the mayor, for their support during this campaign. We ran a very good campaign, and this village is in very good shape. I also like to thank my wife for her support, and putting up with all the meetings I have to go to, stuff during the day, on the weekends sometimes. She's very understanding, and thank you very much. I love you very much. I'd like to thank the community for their support. I met a lot of people, we talked a lot, a lot of things during the campaign, walking door to door, meeting people at early voting, and people seem to be very happy with overall the way things are going in this village. And I'm thinking, why is that? And I, when I come into this room for a board meeting every time, I look at that emblem up on the board there, and it says, "The Exceptional Community." I think, how can we keep this the exceptional community? And it's not just the board members here, it's not just the staff that Sam talked about, the good staff we have, but it's other people too. It's the people on our commissions, our committees, the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals, the farm police commission, they do a lot of work for us, they helped to make this the exceptional community. Then there's other organizations, the Character Coalition, Italian Sister Cities. And by the way, when I mentioned about weddings, I was one of them. My wife and I met through Sister Cities, the mayor had the daughter married through Sister Cities, so thank you, Pat, again. But there's so many people that make this, make this the exceptional community. Take a look at the library board, what they do. We have a great library system here, the Park District, and all the programs they have. And, you know, their parents, they get involved in the sports programs, the coaches and all of that, the churches in the community, and the councils that they have, the schools, the school boards. So many people are doing so many things. Nick does the cleanup of Salt Creek every year. So many people do so many things in this community. It's not just us. So, we can all be proud of all the work that we do because we're all part of making this the exceptional community. And I look, we're forward to four more years to work, and not only with this board, but the entire community to keep that motto going. Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask trustee Miller, come on down. This is the first time you got elected, so what family do you have?
I have my husband, Clark.
Clark, come on down. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tammy K. Miller.
Have been elected to the position of.
Have been elected to the position of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Couple of things I'd just like to say is I'd like to thank the village board, the mayor, for their support during this campaign. We ran a very good campaign, and this village is in very good shape. I also like to thank my wife for her support, and putting up with all the meetings I have to go to, stuff during the day, on the weekends sometimes. She's very understanding, and thank you very much. I love you very much. I like to thank the community for their support. I met a lot of people, we talked a lot, a lot of things during the campaign, walking door to door, meeting people at early voting, and people seem to be very happy with overall the way things are going in this village. And I'm thinking, why is that? And I, when I come into this room for a board meeting every time, I look at that emblem up on the board there, and it says, "The Exceptional Community." I think, how can we keep this the exceptional community? And it's not just the board members here, it's not just the staff that Sam talked about, the good staff we have, but it's other people too. It's the people on our commissions, our committees, the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals, the farm police commission, they do a lot of work for us, they helped to make this the exceptional community. Then there's other organizations, the Character Coalition, Italian Sister Cities. And by the way, when I mentioned about weddings, I was one of them. My wife and I met through Sister Cities, the mayor had the daughter married through Sister Cities, so thank you, Pat, again. But there's so many people that make this, make this the exceptional community. Take a look at the library board, what they do. We have a great library system here, the Park District, and all the programs they have. And, you know, their parents, they get involved in the sports programs, the coaches and all of that, the churches in the community, and the councils that they have, the schools, the school boards. So many people are doing so many things. Nick does the cleanup of Salt Creek every year. So many people do so many things in this community. It's not just us. So, we can all be proud of all the work that we do because we're all part of making this the exceptional community. And I look, we're forward to four more years to work, and not only with this board, but the entire community to keep that motto going. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to ask trustee Miller, come on down. This is the first time you got elected, so what family do you have?
I have my husband, Clark.
Clark, come on down. First election. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tammy K. Miller.
Have been elected to the position of.
Have been elected to the position of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First, Clark, thank you for always being so supportive. I love you very much. I want to thank my family and my friends. I want to thank the board and the mayor, the staff. I was honored to be appointed to the village trustee after Nancy Zarnick had stepped down, and now I'm very honored and humbled to continue to serve this wonderful, exceptional community. I agree, we have so many wonderful residents and so many wonderful programs and other agencies. I thank you for allowing me to serve for you and with you, and I will do my very best for the next four years, and I look forward to serving with not only the rest of the board, but our new board members that are going to be sworn in tonight. So, thank you very much.
We'll go down as the record shortest rookie designation in the history of the village. So, I'll give you extra chocolate there. One for you, all these for Clark.
He loves them, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our first rookie to be sworn in tonight is a name everyone knows well, and that is Kathy Jerish of Jerish Bakery. I'm sorry, can I always bring that up? Kathy, you want to bring some of your family down with you? Yeah, bring them on down. Bring them down. And the rumor's not true, they weren't standing at every polling place with donuts and cookies and Swedish flat to give out on Election Day. Oh, that's great. How you doing, sweetheart? Hey, hey. Okay, Kathy, if you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Katherine A. Jerish.
Have been elected to the position of.
Have been elected to the position of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove.
In the village of Elk Grove.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Introduce.
Hi, everyone, thanks for going long tonight. I've got my husband, Ken, my mother-in-law, the matriarch of Jerish Bakery, Betty, my son Benjamin, and daughter Becky, and son-in-law Abe, and twin granddaughters, Chloe and Josie and Eliana. And those are, thank you all for being here. What an honor to be standing here tonight. I have to say thank you to my friends at the library for giving me a shot there and giving me a jumping board into government service. What a wonderful experience I had there, and what a great board to serve there. And the continuity of this village as boards that work together and serve together and have a genuine passion for the village and a genuine desire to serve. I'm so blessed to be a part of this group. And the staff, I just completed my orientation, holy cow. If you guys could see the outstanding staff we have who serve this village, that's why we have exceptional up there. And to the senior trustees who are leaving us, thank you for leaving us in such good positions and for all your efforts over the years. I echo Tammy, I will humbly try to tiptoe into your spots and then jump in, okay? Thanks.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. There, Karen, you got big hands. Got to give plenty for everyone. There you go. We've got more coming, don't worry.
I'll pass them along.
No, there's a lot of people, she's got to give more. Lot of family. Here.
Do I, where do I go?
Actually, you go up there. Yeah, you got your spot, so.
All the way.
Hang on.
How far are you?
Can you handle it?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. The last one we're going to swear in tonight is Joe Bush. So, Joe, you want to come down, bring your family with you. Bring them on down. Come on, come on, come on. Boys, your son look like you. Oh, my gosh. Oh, split an image.
He's going to fill in some nighttime, he can't make it.
Dad.
All right, just give me a nose.
Joe, as people may or may not know, he's a teacher at Elk Grove High School. And Joe taught a lot of our kids, a lot of our kids up here, and actually, he was coaching the soccer team when I was there, coaching the wrestling team and stuff. So, I've known Joe a long time. First off, it's great to get, no offense, but it's great to get younger people involved. One of the biggest frustrations we have as a board is we ask younger people all the time, do you want to get involved in the village? They don't. They're all, too much, I'm too busy, Craig, or, I got this to go on, I got this. I said, well, so do we, but we need people to step up. And so, when I talked to Joe, it was such refreshing to us to hear someone so enthusiastic and wanting to involve. More importantly, it's great that his wife's willing to let him have the time to do this. And, you know, it can be done, I mean, you know, and he's going to do a great job, but it is nice to see that. So, Joe, I thank you for that, and I look forward to working with you, different perspectives. And, you know, when I started off, I was only 37 as mayor, 33 as trustee, and we have different outlooks when you're that age. And that's good. You want some different outlooks and some younger outlooks. So, I'm excited about that. So, don't be shy. In the meantime, get some work done here. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joe Bush.
Have been appointed to the position of village trustee.
Have been appointed to the position of village trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
And the counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Introduce.
I'd like to introduce my son Danny, my son Michael, and my wife Becky. Thank you very much. They're only here today because they were promised chocolate, so the juice is running on that. Also, thank my best friend, Joe, his daughter, my goddaughter Jamie, or my goddaughter Quinn, his wife Jamie, for being out here, and for Sydney, who's going to graduate tomorrow, and thank you for being here as one of my students. But looking forward to the opportunity, just so much wisdom on the board, and I agree with what Kathy said about, just I did the public works tour, and I was like a kid in the candy store, seeing all the cool toys, and I'm looking forward to my other orientations and looking forward to serving everybody. So, thank you very much.
Since your dad's got to go to work, there you go. I got a whole 'nother one. So, we're good. So, you're set? Be proud of your dad, what he's doing. You'll be proud of it. So, thank you, Joe, have a seat. Folks, thanks again. Okay, you've got to learn new names, huh, Lori? Make sure you get it right. Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here. After we're done here in just a minute, we have some Jerish Bakery goods out. See, Jerish is starting to flow easy, Ken. I have no problem. We have some Jerish Bakery goods out there. Anyone that wants chocolate, we have more up there, don't worry. Plenty left for everyone. So, with that complete, any public comment, anyone here to say anything tonight? Give you a chance. Okay? If not, we'll change your channel.
Actually, Clark, I want to say something.
Oh, Beth Keim? Sure.
As president of the Community Character Coalition of Elk Grove, I could not be more thrilled to have two of our members, Joe and Tammy, sworn in tonight. And so sorry that Patton is, that this is his last night. I've never been so sad to sell anyone's house in my life. And he is the one who sucked me into being president of the Community Character Coalition, so I don't think I'm going to thank him. But anyways, you know, what a great community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion.
The newbies do it.
Newbies do what?
Motion.
Will they know how to?
Let's see.
See if the rookies can come through?
Yeah.
Now, you realize, for the first time in 30 years, I'm not the youngest member of the board. It's a long time, I know. So, okay, I need a motion from one of the rookies to adjourn?
So moved.
I need a second?
So moved.
Oh.
We're going to work. Old listener, that's your first thing.
I said, say it's so moved when you said the motion.
Lori, we have a motion by trustee Jerish, a second by trustee Bush. Will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Prackno?
Yeah, aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Folks, before we adjourn, summer's starting. Enjoy, 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 be safe around the kids. I'm here, have a good summer. Motion adjourned, passes six to nothing. Meeting adjourned.